Okay. Okay, we are ready? Go ahead. All right, I think we're ready. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's a special meeting and for the Village of Hampton Hills, December 17th, 2024, at 10:30. Roll call, please.
Trustee Botner?
Here.
McKelvey?
Here.
Burson?
Here.
Trustee Williams?
Here.
President Wenicki?
Present.
Absent and excused is trustee Muncy. And may we have a motion to allow trustee Mallette to participate in the meeting via conference call? He is absent or he is present and excused due to work obligations.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you get the first?
It was first by trustee Burson, second by trustee McKelvey.
Okay. Rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment.
Tim Morgan?
Good morning. Never thought I'd have to be up here talking or be in a meeting here again, but I have some concerns. Being that I'm not a trustee any longer doesn't mean I still don't listen to the residents, and it doesn't mean that they don't contact me. One of the things that they'd like to be brought to your attention is last year, in March, April, February, this was being handed out by some of the people that are on this board. I just want to read a few things from it. "These candidates will preserve our semi-rural lifestyle, heal the relationships between the village and the residents, be fiscally responsible, restore clear and open communication, support all businesses equally, boost community involvement, protect our natural resources, reestablish a good report with local entities, and support our local police department." I don't think I have to pass this around, but also those of you that weren't in the election in 2003 are up for election next year. And I can tell you, if you take this list, you only hit one or two out of the seven that are there. Your community, and I'm here to represent the community, says you're not listening. You should have seen that in last month's election. I suggest that these quick 10:30 in the morning special meetings is not good for the residents. Luckily, I'm retired. If you're not going to broadcast them live for everybody to be involved, I just don't think it's a good idea. Most people have jobs and have to work that are concerned about their community. Please, those of you that weren't in the election in 2023 should have also heard from the results that the residents wanted change, and we're not seeing this. And I can tell you from personal experience, had the past administration called a 10:30 in the morning meeting on a Tuesday, I would have been jumping up and down, all over social media, even to the news agencies of what is going on in Hampton Hills. This is not what the residents wanted, starting in 2007, and I know it's not what they want in the future. Thank you for my time.
Peggy Suzy-Haver?
Seems very unusual to say good morning. It looks like today I am terminated in my position on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Why, I do not know. My expiration date was to be 2027. I have heard rumors, but have never heard a thing from any of you. Your right to nominate, renominate, and dismiss is factual, although the lack of communication to inform, question, and actually talk to me about my job on this commission has never taken place. When a neighbor, friend of mine, whom I asked about joining Planning and Zoning, she was told she would be appointed at the next board meeting. The agenda showed they appointed someone else. If volunteers are so important to this village, why would you not speak with them and take interest to see how they can best serve? The last year I have spent a great deal of time studying experts in the field of communication skills, in part because of the village and the commission I volunteered to serve. I gave a copy of the cover of the book called Super Communicators. I highly recommend it. He was an ex-CIA agent, and he has a brilliant way of communicating with people, not just the village, not just our community, even in our home. I would also like to quote Ryan Dunlap, who is a conflict strategist and a former hostage negotiator. Language is the foundation of civilization. It is the glue that holds the people together. It is the first weapon drawn in conflict. Licheness to a hammer. They can be used to build up; recklessly, they can be used to tear down. Words have the power to bring about peace, foster understanding, and build connections. I would like to add the fact that of the word, with the lack of words, the lack of communication is a lack of transparency. I will welcome the new commission and hope they are able to provide the village with what it needs. In my tenure, we took on the comprehensive plan, and we went through this book page by page. I did the photography to revamp it. The only thing that we haven't finished is maps. I am grateful to have met some terrific people within our community by getting involved. Actually, friendships are what makes the price of admission worth it. Thank you.
Holly Baran?
I had this under three minutes, but now I'm a little emotional, so it might be a little longer. I would like to preface my comment this morning that nothing I'm about to say is a reflection on any of the wonderful volunteer appointees this morning. My husband says I'm not good at politics because I'm too open and I'm too productive. Maybe he's right, but I can't help myself, so here is a dose of the open truth that I'm really great at. The Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals drama began after a very awkward June meeting. The inside chatter was that a couple people on the commission needed to be removed. I heard that one wasn't fulfilling their role properly, and one was termed anti-village. We have a remedy in our code for this. If you've read our code, you would know it. The president can remove any committee member if they are not a positive force on the commission. A couple months later, they were then talking more and more about splitting the Plan Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals. A decently quick Google search will show you that this is a common tactic used by municipal administrations. They throw the people they don't like on the ZBA because they barely meet. Then they stick the ones that they do like on the Plan Commission because they have actual powers. This was their way of passively removing the now three people they wanted aside. Then, all of a sudden, December 3rd's agenda included dissolving the PCZBA completely. You guys would now magically create a new Planning and Zoning Commission of seven members that coincidentally have the exact same powers and duties as the one you just deleted. When I called to question this, I was given a couple crummy excuses. We are fixing the code and terms that they didn't do correctly in 2015, but it was my understanding and many others that there was already a remedy in place for this, discovered by our clerk. I was again then told that the commissions were being split, but this didn't make sense because I actually read the attorney's memo. No communication was given to any of the commissioners. I saw the agenda, and I called the members to break the news to them that we had been canceled. Many of these volunteers have served for years. They didn't even receive a whisper from their leader. In that meeting, it was said that the deleted volunteers could reapply, yet only one of them was in actual attendance. Two days later, there was a community count sent out with a beautiful clip art that said, "Volunteers, a gift to the community," and then asked for people to send in applications. To date, only two applications have been sent in, two of the ousted rejects, Peggy Suzy-Haver and David Lors, who's not here. Absolutely zero of the appointees before you today have applied for this new mystical committee. Even stranger is that the first two unwanted commissioners are somehow back in. Is all of this trickery legal? Yes, but it's surely not transparent or respectful to this community. And it's definitely not what I had imagined when I traded a lot of my time and my family's time to fight and serve my village. To end, I congratulate the awesome volunteers that are being appointed this morning, but please, just watch your backs and be careful who you trust.
Okay, thank you. And moving on to the consent agenda, items to be removed from the consent agenda. Janet?
I'd like to remove 4D through 4K.
Okay. Anything else? No? Motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 4D through 4K.
So moved.
Do we have a second? I didn't hear. Do we have a second?
Second.
You can remove it on a second.
Yeah. Okay, discussion.
Take a roll call.
Roll call.
Trustee Williams?
Here.
On the consent agenda.
Yeah.
To the consent agenda version.
With those removals.
A through C.
Yeah. T through K.
Nay.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
McKelvey?
Nay.
Trustee Botner?
Aye, yes.
Two to two.
Mike, what is your vote to approve the consent minus the?
The appointments.
Appointments.
So A, B, and C, so the warrants, minutes, and the generator?
That's correct.
Then aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
Okay. All right, moving for a discussion then?
You take each item individually.
Okay, we'll take 4D. We'll start with 4D. Janet, you need to be recognized. Go ahead.
Take a motion to approve and then a second and then?
Okay, motion to approve for 4D for discussion.
No.
No, is that what you said?
We, it's currently on the consent agenda, it's a motion to approve, so if there's going to be discussion on that, there would have to be a motion and then a second.
Okay, motion two?
Aye, so moved.
For 4D for Jim?
I second it.
Second by Tom. Okay, discussion. Go ahead, Janet.
I have no objection to any of the people who have been appointed. I think they're all wonderful people, and so my objection to these appointments has nothing to do with the individuals. It has to do with the process. It has to do with the fact that we are meeting 10:30 in the morning for a special meeting as if it was an emergency to finalize this process that was begun last meeting that I vehemently disagreed with. I don't think this is how you build trust with the community. And of all the items that were listed off of the campaign flyer from almost two years ago, the one that really stuck out to me was the bullet about clear communication, clear transparent communication. That's not happened in this case. We've not communicated clearly and transparently with our village. We didn't even communicate clearly and transparently with the members of the commission that we dissolved. So for me, this is a bad process, and it's not a good way to build trust with our community.
You take a vote.
Yeah. All right, move to go.
Unless there's any further discussion.
Nick, go ahead.
I do. I put together some talking points on this, just to make sure I didn't walk out of here forgetting to say anything. I would also say to all five, all seven of the appointees on here how appreciative we are and how I definitely believe that you would be amazing candidates and commissioners on this new committee. However, reflecting some of that public comment, part of the reason I am doing this is transparency, and you know, I have to look at myself in the mirror every morning. So a couple things I want to mention, and this is generally to apply to all of the consent items regarding the appointees. But while the motion was presented last week that was approved to create this committee and dissolve the other two for unreparable clerical issues, a bookkeeping system, term issues, it really appears to me that the intent has gone beyond simply resolving these administrative issues. The decision to consolidate into one new committee while replacing five of the seven sitting commissioners raises concerns about manipulating the system to remove specific individuals. This action creates a moral dilemma for the village board as it gives the impression of political maneuvering rather than transparency and good governance. And I think this has a big impact on trust and community perception of the board and our village government. That local trust hinges on fairness, accountability, transparency, and when actions appear to be taken under false pretenses, it really erodes the community's confidence and our integrity. Residents expect the village board to act in good faith. Removing sitting commissioners without clear, transparent justification gives the impression of backdoor decision-making, further alienating the public. Even if the intention was to solve clerical issues, the lack of a more thoughtful, inclusive solution does create that perception of an agenda beyond fixing just the administrative problems. Replacing five of the seven committee members under the justification of resolving bookkeeping issues cannot be viewed as impartial. This type of wholesale turnover raises a lot of concerns about fairness and if this process was predetermined. These decisions appear to target individuals, and they set a dangerous precedent for governance now and in the future. At the village board, all of us need to consider how this decision is going to reflect on our governance. Are we fostering trust, or are we creating a climate of division and suspicion? Actions that are perceived as unjust discourage participation from future volunteers. Residents may feel hesitant to serve if their work and commitment can be so easily dismissed. And the community may see this as favoritism or political manipulation rather than an honest attempt to streamline our committee operations. You know, given these moral implications and the concerns I've talked about, I cannot in good conscience vote for the appointment of the five new commission members. The process through which the previous committees were eliminated and consolidated raises serious ethical concerns for myself, and I think they should for all of the board members.
Okay, Tom, go ahead.
The last thing I ever want to be called is a politician. I came from the business world, so I'll be honest with you that I agree with the transparency portion of this. I think that it could be handled definitely in a better way, and I was, I'm a big transparency person even at the business that I had, and I didn't have to do that. It was probably, I mean, it was privately held, but I felt like I owed it to my people because they deserve to know what was going on. And I didn't want rumors or accusations or anything to come out because really, my purposes were honestly for their benefit, so I just wanted that to be clear from the minute that any decision was made. And I think that's a good form of doing anything, and I acknowledge the comments outside here on this group that that would be the way to handle it. Now, as for the appointments, here's the thing, okay? So we can sit here and say, hey, we're not going to vote for these people, okay? The board's been dissolved, right, at this point? We're sitting without a board. We've got these people. I don't have anybody on this list that I could say, wow, I don't want them on there. It doesn't sound like Janet has that, Jim. What I'd say is, let's not turn this political. Let's, because if we're just going to have a meeting in January and approve this list, because that's what it sounds like everybody wants to do, we're just going to like showboat it, push it off, pretend like we want the public to, like, who's running into these meetings going, oh my God, there's no transparency? If that's what we want to do, wait a month to do it, and wait for Ed to be here and actually have a physical Mallette, then let's do it. But to me, I get the point of a 10:30 meeting. I get the point of transparency. I've voiced my opinion about it through the channels that I feel like, I don't do it through Facebook because I don't think that's the way to do it. I think the right way to do it is to go to the people that are involved. I've already voiced that to them, and I'm ready to approve this because I'm going to end up approving it in January. And if we're just going to push this off and play the game, which is political, I'm sorry, that's how I feel. I think we're playing, I think it's, I'll put it this way. I'm kind of running in the middle once again, and I don't, I can't believe that this is always my role on this board, but, okay, we're here, it's 10:30, okay? Let's just get these people on the board. Let's get a board actively going. I don't like a village without a board to do work. I don't think we're against any, no one's speaking individually against any of these people. If you have, then do it. Do it. Tell me how these people suck. Tell me why you're not going to vote for them. Then I'll go with you. Let's have a discussion. But if we're just going to play the game and push it off for three weeks, so we all come back in here again and do the same frigging thing because we want to play games, that's ridiculous, and I don't want to be part of that either. So I equally look at it kind of like we suck at talking to people, admittedly, I agree, but at the same time, if we're going to play the game, well, then I don't like that either, okay? I just don't want to waste our time here. We're here, people want stuff done. If you've got something against these board members, say it now or forever hold your peace. Let's get it over with, or you just want to wait for another meeting? Is that what you guys all want? Then go for it. But I'm ready to do something today and just get some work done.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, I had given my objection privately as well because I thought we announced it to have it done in January, but with that said, I think trustee Williams said, let's chop some wood today, seeing we have the names before us. So I want to call the question, and I think the question on the floor is for the very first candidate, because they were pulled out, which is D, which is on the floor. So I'll call the question.
Okay, so motion to approve 4D, and that's to appoint Andreau Lorario to Planning and Zoning Commission?
There's been a motion and a second already. It'll just be a roll call. There's no?
Okay, roll call on the appointment, Tom?
Trustee Botner?
Nay.
Trustee McKelvey?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Nay.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
And trustee Mallette?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We'll go to 4E, and that is a motion to appoint Jim Copac. Could I move by?
Can I change that motion to make a motion to approve E through K? I know they were pulled out, or do we have to now, because they were pulled out, do them individually? That's my question.
Because they were pulled out, we probably should do them individually.
All right, I make a motion then to approve E.
Okay. Second by Tom Williams. Roll call.
Trustee Botner? Trustee Botner?
Nay.
Trustee McKelvey?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Nay.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
And trustee Mallette, this is for Commissioner Jim Copac. Motion carries.
Motion carries. Motion for 4F. Move before, do I have a motion for 4F?
Aye, so moved.
Moved by Jim, second by Tom.
And this is for Commissioner Neil Anderson?
Neil Anderson, roll call.
Trustee Botner?
Yes.
Trustee McKelvey?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
And trustee Mallette?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We've got 4G, and this is a motion for Jerry Johnson for the Planning and Zoning. Moved by Mike Mallette.
Second.
Second by Janet, roll call.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee McKelvey?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
And trustee Mallette?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We'll go to 4H. This would be the appointment of Therese Hufensberger. Moved by Jim, second, who's seconded? Tom? Seconded by Tom, roll call.
Trustee Botner?
I'm sorry, this was G?
This is H. We're on H, 4H.
Nay.
Trustee McKelvey?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Nay.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
And trustee Mallette?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. 4I, this is a motion to approve Chris Teet to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Another motion.
So moved.
Moved by Jim, second by Tom, roll call.
Trustee Botner?
Nay.
Trustee McKelvey?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Nay.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
And trustee Mallette?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And then a motion for 4J, and that would be for Ralph Frederick, who would be the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll move.
I'm sorry, J is for Mr. Frederick's appointment first.
I'll move for the appointment, and I'd like to make a comment if I get a second.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by McKelvey. Go ahead, Mike.
You guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I hear you fine.
All right. I just wanted to jump in here because the question was called, and I didn't get the comment on all of these. I think I'm most in agreement, much of what Nick, the trustee Botner, said, I 100% agree. And then I also agree with the way trustee Williams kind of wrapped it back around. There's a, there's a lack, or there's a potential issue for not having a Plan Commission sitting at one point, then I get that. I mean, we normally would have met Tuesday nights, so I get that also. If there's a better time to not let something this, not a better time, if there's a, if there's a situation where we get trapped like this, and going back to our discussions from the last meeting, yes, the work of the zoning commission and the establishment of the new ordinance dissolved the old commission, I get that, and then we were talking about too. So every comment I made last meeting, you know, still, I understand, but to the point of, you know, I don't like a false sense of urgency based upon, you know, having to schedule a morning meeting when we could have an evening meeting, and the added strife from the public comments that we heard, so to the point, it's nothing to do with these individual folks, right? They're all capable, we appreciate their willingness, but we also had people that were willingly doing these jobs too, and, you know, we need to do better. So that's my point, but I understand we need to get a zoning and planning commission set, or planning and zoning commission set, so that's the reason I'm moving and voting for these, so that's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you, trustee Mallette. Any other comments?
Welcome.
Okay.
Trustee Botner?
Nay.
Trustee McKelvey?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Nay.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
And trustee Mallette?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And then finally, we've got four K, and that's the appointment of Rolf Frederick as the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Jim, roll call, please.
Trustee Botner?
Nay.
Trustee McKelvey?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
And Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you for that. We'll move to five action items. Motion to accept the attached proposal for updating and amending the building code to 2021 with Fire Safety Consultant Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $7,500.
Aye.
Motion please. Moved by Janet.
Second.
Second.
Second by Tom. Okay, any discussion? Okay, then roll call, please.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee McKelvey?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
And Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Going on to six discussion items. An ordinance allowing for the regulation of traffic on a certain road within the village of Hampton Hills. It's Nancy Lane, which is between Burlington Road and Silver Glen Road. And this is up for discussion, and we tried to put copies of signs that Ray from our road department had sent to me. And for you to look at to think what would work best on that. It's basically become a truck cut through, and that's what they want to stop. So, any discussion?
I think you could recognize the police chief, he's got some background.
I'd love to recognize Chief Lavand.
Thank you, thank you so much. So, Nancy Lane has been, I don't know if anyone, everyone's familiar with Nancy Lane. It is literally about a block and a half, two blocks long. It is a residential street that goes between Burlington Road and Silver Glen Road. And you have a lot of houses out there, like many of our neighborhoods, that have kids and families and dogs, and they like to walk on the street. So, I have been out there now three times. I've had a couple residents contact me. I've gone out personally. I've done it at different times of the day, and I want to see two things. Our first concern was the speed, which the police department's been trying to address with more enforcement. And then the second is the commercial truck traffic. So, what they're doing from their security surveillance rings, they've been sending me the videos of these trucks. We're not talking about little box trucks. We're talking about tractor trailers that are using this as a cut through. The reason they're using it as a cut through is many of them are coming off Dipman Road or they're coming off Silver Glen, and it's much easier to jog right and then left or vice versa to keep going north instead of going up to Burlington and Silver Glen, which we do know that it's a little more of a pain, especially for a truck to make those turns there. Can be done safely, but it is, I know why they're doing it. It is a huge safety concern, so I advised the residents that I would look into this. This is a good route to go, is to post a no commercial truck traffic with exception to local deliveries. And we obviously would go out there and enforce this verbally and with warnings at first. We're not looking to go out there and just hand people tickets. We want to educate them on it. It's not, it's a safety issue for the people to live on that street there. And it is a serious safety issue, because like I said, I've been out there numerous times to watch this. So, I think this is a good way, I've already spoken to everyone. Obviously, Burlington and Silver Glen are KDOT roads. They have no issue in this. And I think a good piece to this is Nancy Lane was just redone, the roadway. And you are talking a matter of not even a year, if we allow these trucks to continue to use this, that road is going to be gone, and you guys are going to have to try to figure out how to get more funds to redo a road that you just did. So, that is my reasoning. Attorney Forte, he's been super helpful in this process. Obviously, we wanted to make sure everything was covered. We spoke to all the agencies. The residents would be happy if we did this. Again, the speed issue, that's me and the department. We got to sort of keep dealing with that. But hopefully, if we put this up here, because I'm watching commercial tractor trailers also break the speed limit out there because they're in a hurry to get through, so.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of things. One, the signs that Ray proposed, those are pretty standard M U T C Manual Uniform Traffic Controlled Device signs. So, they're easily enforceable. By way of reference, Chief, we, our bridge over here at work, over the river is posted 16 tons. And our guys generally would want to warn, but we, last week had a, not mine, that was running at 103,000. So, they made a $17,000 donation to the village for the negative impact they had on our bridge. So, while traditionally, it's new traffic control devices, grace period, I get all that, but I'm quite sure if you guys saw somebody that was obviously that heavy, you'd still ride them anyway. And word gets around through the broker, trucking brokers, very quickly. So, I've said from day one, everybody's heard me say this, enforcement is really the only reliable measure to control speed, the only reliable measure to control driver behavior is the fear of having to pay out of their pockets for their expedience, their own expediency or laziness or whatever. So, I'm okay with the warnings, make a short grace period would be my suggestion. But you run the department, that's what we have you here for. But I'm fully in favor of this. This is, for every reason that Chief mentioned, we don't need, I mean, even a legal, 84,000 is legal? I can't remember what's legal now, it used to be 73. Whatever legal 18 wheeler is, is still more loading than that road was designed for or even what we built it for. And the more critical to the behavior or to the effect on pavement is the repetitive loadings of that kind. You can handle one or two, you know, unstressed apart, but if you're going to have them happen, you know, three, four, five, six, seven on a day, the road's not designed for that. So, I think this is a good solution.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any more discussion?
I just wanted to point out just that the ordinance I prepared is just in draft format. So, depending on the discussion today, if you wanted to make any changes, it's very general in nature. It's preventing the use of commercial trucks unless you're performing local delivery. So, if you wanted to add any more specifics, certainly can. I just wanted to provide it for an example after your input.
Janet, go ahead.
I'm in favor of moving the ordinance forward for action at the next meeting. I live not far from there, and I understand the dynamic. And in fact, when we, we had a, just a little bit of, I don't want to say extra money when we were doing roads, but an amount that was too small to apply to a larger road. And there was discussion in this, in this last round as to whether that money was going to go to a reclamation or some other type of treatment for the roads or whether we would find a small project. And Nancy Lane was one of the small projects that we found. And one of the reasons that we chose it is because although it is a neighborhood road, it is effectively also a secondary road. And it's not just trucks that cut through there. And, and I'm, and it doesn't have anything to do with this ordinance, which I think we should move forward, but I have a secondary concern about cars that may choose to use this as a cut through when the stop sign goes up at Burlington and Silver Glen. Because I think there's going to be significant backups at that stop sign, and there are going to be people that say, oh, hey, I can take Nancy Lane, you know, hop down to Silver Glen over and on my way. So, I don't know what options we have to try and, you know, reduce or eliminate non-local traffic generally. It's a small block, it's very small, as you pointed out. So, I'm not even sure how you enforce that with autos, but it's a concern.
I would look over there to our great attorney. You can tell all the trucks that I'm familiar with, I don't know legally when it comes to cars up through a two main roads or count roads. Right, so, you can put up a sign that says no through traffic, but then the enforcement is really more of a difficult question than preventing a particular type of vehicle. And given the limited resources of the police department, it might be a little bit difficult. But that's certainly up to you. I mean, you can restrict any road to local traffic only, and sometimes a sign is all you really need to help cut down on those violations.
Go ahead, Tom.
Janet, you want to do that now, just make a motion to get this done?
Well, it's on for discussion.
Because I mean, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, I was just asking, because the only reason I'm saying is, this seems like a no-brainer. I hate the road to take any more abuse. If a 100,000 pound truck drives through it next week, it's going to cause damage. I just hate having all that money spent on a road.
Right, I'm happy to move this ordinance forward.
Yeah, if you want to, I mean, I'll second it.
It's discussion, not action.
You move it forward for the next.
To the January 7th meeting?
Yeah, I second that, so.
Yeah, and I'll talk with Ray from our road district also and get some other ideas from him. This is the first part of it that he sent to me, he emailed to me.
Mike said those are the standard signs.
Those are the standard signs, okay.
Yep.
All right. Good, we'll move that to January 7th. Okay, moving on to seven additional items from President Trustee's attorney. American Planning Association training, January 15, 2025.
That is tentative, and we're going to invite Elburn and Lily Lake when we have a confirmation for that training.
Okay.
Point of water, it looks like we missed six B.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah.
I think it was removed.
Oh, it was?
I think a pre-
Yeah.
A previous version of the agenda had it on there, but I believe it has been removed.
Yeah, I actually had it on mine too. Okay, any other additional items from trustees? Chief, go ahead.
So, just real quickly, because I don't have a police department report on here, and I wasn't at your guys' last meeting, but I did review the last meeting to see what was, took place. So, I just want one clarification, because I hear like a bunch of numbers that have been thrown around on this when we were speaking of the generator. So, we've heard 30, we heard 40, we heard 50, and this and that. So, like, I also want to, so originally, when Kane County bought this generator, the generator, what cost them obviously to install the generator for them was, you know, a $50,000 cost. Like, that was with everything. So, we were getting a generator that has not been used, commercial, not residential. And I know I saw some, looked it up and saw the different prices and that. Many of those, they have, you know, 600 hours on those generators that are used. And the price we are getting the generator for, realistically, if we threw it out there and bought it brand new from somewhere, out of the box, without the additional switches, which are also on there, you're probably realistically going to pay in mid 20,000 range, somewhere could go up to 30,000. It depends on the distributor. So, we are getting a, I say like new, it's never been used, obviously, generator for a big cost savings on it. I just wanted to clarify it a little bit, because I know the numbers were out. I threw those numbers too, because that's what I was getting from KDOT. So, I just wanted to give a little clarification. We are getting a great deal on a generator. I know it's been approved, but I just wanted everyone to sort of realize like where those numbers were coming from on there. And there's two more quick things for you. The monthly reports are finally done. You're going to see they're slightly different. They'll get emailed over. I have the last two for you, because we've now had to reformat all these. Pretty much the same information that you always get, might look a little bit different. If you see something that you don't like or would like changed, let me know. Christina can tweak that. So, you will be getting those. And just want to thank everyone for Holiday in the Hills. Christmas parade was a success, so it was good community events. And I think there was one more thing I'm forgetting, but it'll eventually come to me, so.
Yes, go ahead, Tom.
Chief Lavand, if, I mean, I know you brought it up, the generator part. I just wanted to get, because I mean, that's going to be something that's probably going to be in our next year, you know, decision-making wise. Your opinion, whole building, part of the building, if I had to ask you, I mean, what would be your preference?
100% without a doubt. Here, let me, I'm going to, I got to throw this out to you guys one more time. This should make your decision easy. When we have a tornado, which we've had three in a year and a half here, luckily, knock on wood, like minimal damage, some little bit structure. When I get the form from Kane County, well, you guys approved the recent change, because now it's being overseen or run through the state, same thing. When we get the forms for a disaster, the number one question on that form to me is, did your agency have opened to the public a facility that could provide heat, cooling, and shelter during that time? We have to mark yes or no. If you mark no on that, any additional funding that you may get for a disaster is not coming your way. They've already told me that. Like, that is a basic requirement and expectation of government, no matter what town you're in. Like, if the residents need somewhere to go, if it's winter, we need to have heat. We need to have lights. If it's summer, air conditioning. I would say 100% do the whole building. I understand that cost is always an issue, but do the whole building, and this whole thing gets put behind us, and it would be very lovely.
Yeah, good point. All right, Mike, you kind of stole my last comment with, I just, I just wanted to thank everybody that contributed to Holiday in the Hills. It was a wonderful event. The Community Relations Department just really works hard. And apparently, there's, I think, I actually, we're in need of some community relation volunteers. So, if you want me to be transparent, that's what I'm going to tell you right now. But anyway, but I want to, I want to thank the CERT team as well, and I want to thank the police department for all the work they did. And of course, COTA was the hit of the evening, as always. It goes that way, yeah. All right, any other comments?
Just note for the record, as I indicated to the clerk, I would have, Michelle and I have been there, but Sundays are always, visit my mom in Elgonquin, visit her mom in Naperville, and it's a 100 mile round trip, so we just couldn't quite squeeze it in, but glad everybody had a good time.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, moved by Janet.
Second.
Second by Nick. Everybody say aye.
Aye.